See, we have what? We have four council members, so there is a quorum. So Mayor Protem, you ready to call the meeting to order whenever Michelle tells?
Whenever she, yeah, okay. You ready? Okay, call the meeting of the Lacey Lakeview City Council at six eleven P. M. I will first have a roll call.
Mr. Weber. Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Leddy. Mr. Sine.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Plecic.
Here.
This far.
The next is the agenda briefing.
Okay, tonight, we have four items on the agenda, action items on the agenda. The first being a consideration for a request to grant exemption to our fence ordinance. Excuse me, Mr. James McGovern at two eleven Broken Arrow is requesting to put up a snapped together, no dig metal fence. You should have some photographs of what the fence looks like through the company he's trying to buy with. That would be Lowe's. It's just kind of a ornamental wrought iron type fence. The way it works, it basically snaps together end to end, and then it's stapled down, if you will, staked to the ground and self-supported. Any questions on that?
Keith, what have we done in the past with people requesting?
We actually allow, well, have allowed every one of these ornamental type fences. It's just contrary to the ordinance because it's metal and it doesn't fall within the three things that's allowed. So it has to have that exemption.
Keith, in that picture that's there, is that fence, that drawing, is that fence going to be where that's marked twelve foot from street?
Yes, yes, he's gonna place it twelve foot from the curb, and then it'll go across the front and then up the sides. He'll basically have a small fenced-in front yard with greenery on the outside.
So it's his front yard that he's putting this fence, fencing off?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, okay.
Besides, did I answer your question?
Basically, it's not a permanent fence?
No, no, it's not a permanent structure.
Which is it down into the ground?
Right, yes, ma'am.
So it could be removed at any time if it becomes?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So was, if it's not permanent, do they need a permit?
Because it'll be erected as a fence, it would need to be, yes.
Is there any need for any of the neighbors' input on this?
We haven't required it on any others, and it's been posted on the agenda. So, I mean, if a neighbor was in opposition, they would be able to see that it's for hearing tonight. They could have submitted a complaint or something for it.
But it's not a complaint, it's other than change or something?
No.
There's a statutory requirement for those to go out?
No.
Okay.
Do you know if any of the other neighbors in this neighborhood have any kind of a fence in their front yard? Just from driving around there?
There are some chain link fences over there, I think, a couple of them. And then there's some wooden fences in the back, of course.
I mean, in the front, does anybody has a fence in their front yard that you know of?
Not anything that I can recall right offhand, no.
But it's not prohibited in the ordinance to have a fence?
That's correct, not prohibited, it's just because of its construction, what it's made of, it has to come for you guys.
That's good.
Okay.
Anything else on that particular item?
I'm good.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a consideration to authorize myself to pursue new tax bond money, up to two million dollars through Southwest Security. Some of you guys, I think, were on here, some not, but most not, actually. Back in twenty fifteen, when we started the second water tie-in project, we bonded, it's actually like a hundred, one point nine seven million dollar bond in twenty fifteen to complete a project to build a new distribution plant and tie in with the city of Waco. We've had hurdles and we've run into all sorts of things. So most recently, as you may recall, we've just made an offer on some property, and we're very close to closing that. And we've started designing other things on that second water tie-in. So I had the engineers give me an updated figure on what that cost is today. We know in twenty fifteen, it was just shy of three million dollars, which we've got the two million and we had some in reserve. So we've paid out a lot of engineering fees and other things out of that bond, but we still have one point eight in reserve. As you can see, there's a Walker Partner estimate on here for the new project, and it looks like it's now estimated to be three point seven million dollars for that project. I reached out to Southwest Securities and got a rundown of what it looks like, because we do have a bond that's about to mature, about getting an additional, it actually would be just shy of two million, to pay for this project, and it would also have a little bit of reserve in there to pick up problems that we might run into. If you look at this Hilltop Security page, it's a debt service savings schedule. Can you find that one? If you'll notice, we have debt service that's currently underway. I believe that was a twenty ten issuance. So we have this annual payment this year, twenty one, and we have one more payment on that in twenty twenty-two, and that one clears out. And then we would start this new bond in twenty twenty-three at a lesser amount. You see the new utility payments to the right-hand column there? That's what our annual payments would drop to if we decide to do this bond. Again, because we're very close to paying off a twenty ten issuance, we won't make a payment on the new bond for a year and a half, basically. And then while we looked at it, and this is completely optional, we have a letting that was also a twenty ten series that is one point one nine five million currently. We can refinance that one, and over the next seven years, save about forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand dollars. If we're issuing one, refinancing the other one can be rolled into it, and you won't, there won't be really any difference. It's not a lot of extra work to do that, and it does save us forty-four thousand dollars over seven years. If all that makes sense.
I'm gonna see if what you're saying makes sense, I don't see the cuts reflected in these numbers about one big payoff.
So this, if you're on this page here, so right now, our debt service, existing utility payment, you see that?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So that column is five fifty-six, we're gonna pay off three hundred thousand a year.
Okay.
In two years. So you see in twenty twenty-three, what's gonna replace that?
Is this bond that you're proposing?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So the last payment is five fifty-seven, two ninety?
Correct.
And then that one zeroed out?
Right. And then we start the new series, the four ninety-two, which will be actually in twenty twenty-three, when we start this new bond series. This bond, actually, I asked that it be issued around the July-August timeframe, because as I said, I do have, we do have bond money in reserve for this project, so we'll be able to start it, no problem. It's just when we get down to the end, providing bids hold this way, this is kind of what we're looking at.
Let me tell this favor, though, this is all obligations, not just, not just one.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, yes.
And, yeah, that was my first thought when you brought this up, and said, well, you need to hurry up.
Correct, yes. So in my opinion, and our counsel Dave can probably also say this, with this land closing, we're probably closer than we've ever been to getting this project completed. So I would say we're probably looking at if we can get everything together, maybe the fall, starting to bid this thing, and then early spring, start the construction.
Keith, this new bond with these numbers here, does that add in refinancing the other debt?
Now, the other debt's actually out of another series and not reflected in this particular page.
Okay.
So our other series would continue on, it's just our payments would be just a little bit less.
Okay.
Do you see that one? That next page there?
Oh, that's the other one?
Yes.
The refinance on the second page, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And not reflected in the first page. This is all the current debt on the first page, and this is the ongoing debt on the second page for that second bond. Not the one we're asking for, the one that exists.
The one that exists, they're gonna refinance at one and a half percent?
Correct.
Good deal.
Exactly.
Good deal. Yeah. Why can't we get that on the new one?
I don't know, I can't tell you, two percent's pretty good, though.
Yes, it is.
Now, this is for that water tower project that we're talking about, they're behind Ranger? That's what this is all about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if we don't approve this, then what happens? What's, I mean, what are we gonna have to do if this doesn't pass?
Well, we'll have purchased the land, and we'll have paid for the engineering. We just may not have enough money to pay for pumps and motors and tie-ins and
Okay.
This is, and it's simply just because of a time issue. You know, we issued these bonds, and we thought in twenty fifteen, we were gonna be under construction. And then we run into a lot of snags, and it's delayed it. And then the cost increase between twenty fifteen and today
Okay.
is the difference.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
Yes, you feel like a little bit of overage that's gonna be in there, and I did the math. I feel like that little bit of overage is going to be enough if we encounter problems.
Yes, yes. So, again, originally, I got what was considered two million, it was one point nine nine something. I originally got that, it's still in reserve. We paid most of our engineering fees out of that. We have one point eight million in that particular fund.
Yes, sir.
Then I have a construction fund that we were gonna combine with that to bolster. Now we're looking at one point nine, so the whole project is three point seven. So it gives you quite a cushion in there, as much as a half a million. So there may be a couple of things that we have to change along the way, or maybe even upgrade, but we should have plenty to do that.
Sounds good, it was more than my math showed. Thank you.
Anything else on that one? And the next item on the agenda is a discussion and approval of inter-local agreement for our North Interceptor Improvement Project. Some of you may recall, we discussed this. It's about taking a large portion of the city on the northeast side and diverting those flows in our sewer across to TSTC and tying in and metering from a separate point. So we have two connections for sewer, as well as we do water. That growth out there has been pretty tremendous, and right now, we're sending everything through one central line. We have a fifteen-inch outflow line that's picking up the entire city, and that thing is really maxed out, and during rain events, it's even worse. So we're talking about taking off, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen percent, maybe twenty, and diverting those flows to a different location. Of course, it comes with a cost, but this is the first step in getting that tie-in in progress. Just so you know, this thing can stretch for many budget years. It has phases, and it starts by the old General Tire plant in Belmeade, and then extends through Belmeade, out towards
The old railroad line?
Yes. Yeah, pretty close to it, yes, sir. It comes through there, it eventually goes to eighty-four off Williams Roads. That's a good stretch, down eighty-four to the east, and crosses over and eventually picks up where TSTC currently dumps today.
And right around the Dr. Pepper plant somewhere?
Pretty close to that, yes, sir.
Okay.
So then on the north side of the campus, close to Mesquite Tree, is where we have a lift station that picks up the entire housing addition out there, the Comanche Creek addition. We would divert that flow to this new dump site right there on campus and flow out the other end, which takes a lot of pressure off of that system. But multi-phases, multi-years, it may be that we expend funds pretty quickly, and we may not really see that being able to be used for three years or so. So, you know, with that in mind, this agreement puts those wheels in motion, that yes, we want to participate, yes, we want to divert our flows, and we're willing to pay our down payment for that.
Will others be tapping on that straight to us, Elmont, and out that way? Is that part of what we're?
No, no, no. Right now, it's just city of Waco, Belmeade, TSTC, and Lacey Lakeview. In the future, it's designed to be able to pick up portions of Elmont and divert their flows.
To keep them having to go under thirty-five?
Well, and they have their own treatment facility, which is mediocre at this point. They're getting into a situation like Lorena was in. But that's the future plan, that's what we're looking at. I don't see anything, anything wrong with the, with the project, other than it's just a timing thing for us. We're kind of the last one in the loop. But we'll be expending funds on this thing and not using it for some time.
Well, it stands on its own leg just for diversification, so that if something happens.
Future.
That's right, we've got another place to go with it, that's low.
That's correct, but again, future-wise, as we grow, and there's still some growth, we're stretching what we have.
And most of the growth is gonna be out that direction, you'd say?
I think so, and we're looking at, you know, even more commercial stuff out there. We'll be, that system will, it'll be tested, if you will.
So we the last ones to buy into this?
No, we all buy into it at the same time.
No, I mean, but have the others already done it? Waco and Belmeade and TSTC?
No, so Waco has it on their agenda next week, I believe. Belmeade is on their agenda tonight as ours, and TSTC, I don't know when they're scheduled to vote on their end. But I would assume, you know, they don't have council meetings, they have some other kind of meeting, but I'm assuming they can do theirs at any time, board meeting.
I mean, is there any reason why, for instance, TSTC would say, no, we're not going along with this? Or Belmeade say, we're not going along with this? Is there any reason for that kind of situation to come up?
No, because, to be honest with you, Mr. Plecic, this project has been in the works for, we've been meeting on this thing and talking about it for probably the last three years.
Okay.
It's just now come into a position where we can move on it and start that process. And so it's not new, and everybody's certainly aware of it, and it's something that's gonna have to be done on Belmeade's end and Waco's end, whether we do it or not. They've got to do it.
Yeah, Belmeade is in a critical state, they have to. Their attorney and their city manager, they've already approved the council form of the agreement in the same way, the same form that we have. The original agreement we got from Waco has been totally revised, and this one is much more consistent with what everybody understood, the go-forward agreement, what everybody's plans were. So Belmeade is on board, Waco obviously is on board. My understanding from Keith is that TSTC is on board.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think, following what I gather, may have been the driving point of our regulation. If, for words' cases, then somebody does opt out, it's an all-in, it's all or nothing. So if TSTC decides not to do it, does that fulfill us, or does it leave us hanging?
Well, it could leave us in jeopardy, however, there's provisions in the contract that allows other cities to pick up that part of it. And the bulk of this thing is gonna be on Belmeade and Waco. And they're already funded for both, so TSTC's a very minute piece of the puzzle.
And the exposure to their bill, from what I hear you say, is financial, not a question of getting money invested and not being able to dig ditch?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 so the project would continue, it wouldn't just stop right here, that's it.
Okay.
It's talking about how we allocate costs and the only portion of the cost that's our, that risk are fairly small percentage of the overall cost.
This is correct, yes.
Plus, we definitely had to add an department.
Any other questions on that agreement? Okay, the last item on here is recently was brought to Michelle's attention, and as long as I've been here, I didn't know anything about it, and we found out from Dave, neither did he. But we didn't actually have an ordinance in place specifying a particular time of the month where bills would be due and readings would take place for your water meters. So we've always used the same schedule. We have two cycles, one's due here, one's due here, this is when you read it. Recently, we had an ice storm that delayed us a week in being able to even read meters, and so we got a little kickback from a person or two about, well, I didn't get my bill on time, it didn't. So we actually did some things in there to help people out during that time, but we needed, felt like we needed an ordinance that pretty much spells out when we read, when we bill, when they're due, those types of things. And then included in that ordinance is, in case of emergency or some kind of weather condition that prohibits reading, it can be delayed a little bit. So very last item here is that ordinance setting those reading dates, those billing dates, and those cycles.
Gives you a little challenge for negotiating and or extending.
Correct, correct, yeah, and I mean, you know, like I say, we had a couple call in. Well, we didn't get it on time, so we don't got, you know, those types of things. But, I mean, it was an emergency, those types of things can happen from time to time, and if that's the case, then that'll do that. Plus the holidays, you're looking at, sometimes, you know, during a holiday, we may move the reading up a few days or back a few, and so that helps us cover those also.
So this just authorizes in an ordinance what we've been doing for years?
In writing.
In writing, yes, well, yeah.
What we didn't have before.
What we didn't, okay.
Correct.
I mean, it's not changed anything that we've been doing.
Doesn't change anything, it's just now it's specified in writing.
It just protects the staff.
Correct. Any other questions on that? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay. Next item is staff reports, do we have any staff reports, Keith, that you know of?
Staff reports were included, but let me just say one thing here. We, as y'all know, we did that sewer rehab study on the north end of town, the north side of town, and we have now advertised, or the engineers have advertised for the bids on that, and we'll actually open those bids in here on the fourth, and then we'll start looking at the contractors and doing the background on them, and have that, those bid packets here for you on the eleventh to award the bids to whoever the successful contractor will be, and we can get started on the rehab project, those manhole rebuilds and some of those infiltration problems. So look for that on your next council agenda, but just letting you know, that's where we're at in that process. We'll have that ready to go for you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, okay, we'll recess the work session and convene in the regular session at six forty P. M. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item is approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of March the twenty-third. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Move we approve minutes?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Barbara, are you in?
Okay, I'll shock in here, okay. Oh, that's right, I didn't put that back in. Okay. Would you please poll the council?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our next item is the mayor's report. Ms. Madam Mayor's not here. Any public comment? I see anyone here? I don't see anyone here. Council members input? Can any council member have any input? Anything they want to... Okay, next, discussion and consideration of action to consider the request to grant an exemption to ordinance 99-22, types of fences permitted to allow for a no-dig metal panel fence at 211 Broken Arrow Drive. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we allow the exemption to the ordinance.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. So I guess the motion fails for lack of a... It's a no vote? Okay. So that is denied.
Just for everybody's information, because you only have four council members present, any affirmative vote will have to carry three of the four council members for it to pass.
Okay, number 11, discussion and consideration of action on authorizing the city manager to pursue new bond or tax note money of up to $2 million through Southwest Securities. Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, please poll.
Sir, Dave, just to be clear, that second part of this, that refunding, does that need to be included in the motion, sir?
If the motion is to both seek and explore the new bond plus refunding or refinancing, then yes, it needs to be included in the motion. If Michelle's talking, I didn't hear her.
He didn't hear you, Michelle.
Just ask him if it can be included in the motion because that's not listed on the agenda.
She's asking if it can be included in the motion because it's not listed on the agenda that way.
If it's not listed on the agenda, it's got to be consistent. Is there a, and I don't have a packet sitting in front of me because I'm using my iPad to actually zoom in. But if it's not listed on the agenda and there's not language that would allow it to be, then it can't be included.
It is not. It is not on the agenda that way. So it would just have to be this tax note, this bond.
Yeah, and then you can, Michelle just handed me, let me just make sure. It would just need to be the two, the new tax or the new bond money.
Correct.
And you can always explore that while you're doing that. And then the council, at the next council meeting, can decide if they want to include that or not.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so where are we, Michelle? We...
We've got a motion.
We have a motion in a second? Okay. Please poll the council.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion, next item, discussion and consideration of action to approve the interlocal agreement for the city's North Interceptor Improvements Project. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item, discussion and consideration of action to approve ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance of the City of Lacey Lakeview, Texas, reviewing the due dates and termination dates for utility bills for the City of Lacey Lakeview, Texas, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
I move the approved, we, the ordinance has...
Motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Please poll the council.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item, discussion and consideration of action to cancel the second regular scheduled council meeting for April 2021. Do I hear a motion?
I move to cancel the second regular scheduled council meeting for April 2021.
And we have a motion? Do I hear a second? Motion in a second, any discussion?
How quick do we need to get on that part of the bond refinance? Can it, so it can wait?
Yeah, Keith, good question from Mr. Hotty. What does John at Southwest Securities say as far as when the process would need to start on that? Would you need to have some approval in place by two weeks? Or could they wait till the second Tuesday in May?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, he has the proposed calendar here. The proposed city council considers the resolution of intent to issue them on May the 11th, so at the council meeting at 6:00 PM. That's when it begins. So we would be able to include that one as a separate item. And I'm assuming the calendar can be the same calendar used, the same dates and all. It's just that reissuance of that would be a separate object, subject.
So you can talk to him and get the information and do all that. And then the council can vote. I guess to move forward. My only hesitation is, can you do that both on the same meeting date? And I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head.
And I can visit with John tomorrow.
It might be, it might be prudent not to cancel the meeting. And then if you have not to cancel, that way, if you have to have a quick meeting to do anything before that, you can do it. If not, ultimately, the meeting can be, can be canceled if there are no agenda items at all in advance.
Gotcha.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but if there's nothing to come for the council and nobody has asked anything to come for the council, it still can be canceled.
So we can just leave it in position in case we need it. And if we don't, and can do it on this meeting on the 11th, then we don't have the meeting, second meeting.
Unless somebody has a request or something comes up, yes.
Gotcha.
So do, we have a motion in a second before the council, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, please poll the council.
No.
No.
No. Case, meeting adjourned.